And I'll give you the equipment, and then you're going to help me. And we're on both sides of this tower sixty feet up. And I'll tell you that thing will sway, and we'll be, well, we put the downmill problem on these off to handle it to me when it's screwed up.
Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Mayor Gamble. I will call our council meeting of Tuesday, October eighth, two thousand twenty-four, to order at nine o'clock a.m. Welcome to all who are joining us. I will confirm that we do have quorum. We have all council members in attendance with the exception of Councilor Bernie Usens regrets. Welcome to our administration, and we do not have anyone visiting from the gallery today. I'll begin today with our territorial land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the homeland of many diverse First Nations and Métis people whose ancestors have walked this land since time immemorial. We are grateful to work, live, and learn on the traditional territory of Treaty Six. We'll move now to our inspirational reflection. I will turn it to Counselor Kabasia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During our council meeting today, may we have the gift of good judgment to direct us in making accurate decisions for the progression of the county? May we have the courage to fulfill our responsibility with honesty and integrity? And may our first concern be for the good of all people of Parkland County?
Thank you, Counselor Kabasia. We'll now move to our agenda. I will look to council members for any additions or deletions to today's agenda. Look to administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning, council. No additions or deletions from administration today.
Great, thank you. I will look to Deputy Mayor Kucha Johnson to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Motion before us, questions, comments, debate. I will call the question all in favor. The motion is carried unanimously. Let's move on to item three point one, the adoption of the September twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four council meeting minutes. I'll look to Counselor Kowalski to move that motion.
Good morning, good morning, everyone. It's back, nice to be back in person and see everybody's shiny faces in fall. Thank you. That the September twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four council meeting minutes be adopted as presented.
Thank you. Motion is on the floor. Any questions, comments, debate? I will call the question all in favor. The motion is carried unanimously. Let's move on. Item four point one, which is our nine oh five public input. I will look to Ms. Williams for any registered speakers for this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council. Today, we do not have any registered speakers.
Thank you, and I do not see anyone in the gallery. We are a bit early, so if someone comes in, we can always move back. So we will move ahead. We do have item six B one, which we will move to after our in-camera session, which relates to a related item. So we're going to move forward to item six D one, the two thousand twenty-five recreation and culture capital cost share request. Look to Mr. Cross for introduction, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Pleased to welcome Ms. Suzanne Merrill, our Director of Community Services, and she's here to present the two thousand twenty-five recreation and culture capital cost share requests for council's consideration. Be pleased to answer any questions that council may have following her presentation. Thank you.
Good morning. So Community Services is presenting recommendations for the recreation cap, culture capital cost share requests received from our partners for two thousand twenty-five. These requests address life cycle and standard maintenance activities that ensure the effective and efficient operation of facilities that our residents can access. As part of our recreation capital, a cultural cap, cost share agreements we have with our municipal partners, council may, at their discretion, provide funding support for capital repairs or upgrades at the facilities outlined in each of our agreements. Administration has received requests from the city of Spruce Grove, the town of Stony Plain, the town of Devon, and Yellowhead County for a variety of proposed projects to be included in our budget. City of Spruce Grove is requesting one hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. The town of Stony Plain is requesting a total of thirty-six hundred, thirty-six thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. The town of Devon is requesting sixteen thousand six hundred and seventy-three, and Yellowhead County is requesting forty-five thousand. Capital cost shares with our regional partners do help support the amenities that Parkland County residents access, and administration has reviewed all of their requests and supports this recommendation. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Merrill. We will look at four proposed motions. I'll start with Counselor Weedman for the first proposed motion, please.
That council approve up to one hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-six for the city of Spruce Grove's two thousand twenty-five capital cost share request as presented.
Great, thank you. The motion is on the floor. Any questions, comments? I'll start with Deputy Mayor Kucha Johnson.
I think I might have asked this question before, but how does, how do we determine what our cost share will be for Spruce Grove?
Through the mayor to Counselor Kucha Johnson. So within our current agreements that we have, the municipalities are required to do some sampling of participation usage, and that's the number that they use. And so every year they send us, we base it off the previous year's percentage. So they determine what that is, and in it, within our agreement, we have a max percentage that we will pay.
Thank you, Counselor Kowalski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Ms. Merrill. Thank you. Further to that question, I had the same one about how we verify the percentages. So it's really them stating how much. And so what is the maximum for each, if you can recall that?
I, I can go. Yes, through the mayor to Counselor Kowalski. I don't know the maxes for each off the top of my head, but I can definitely pull those numbers for you. We are currently also renegotiating our agreements, so those will change moving forward.
Thank you, because I look at some of them, and I think, I, I know my residents, and I don't believe they're participating at the level that's being, but how do you prove that? There's, it's impossible for me to prove the opposite of what they present to you. So thank you for that.
Through the mayor to Counselor Kowalski, just to add on to that, we have audited in the past on the stats. So this past year, we did Spruce Grove's. They did provide us with the postal code so we could verify, because we also weren't sure about numbers, and they were, in fact, on, on par.
Great, thank you. Counselor Weedman.
You might have answered this. How often are these percentages looked at?
Through the mayor to Counselor Weedman, they are done annually.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments, debate? I certainly do see this as something that Parkland Counties, Spruce Grove, Stony Plain, Devon, we all have amenities that are typically based in the urban centers, and we do have agreements in place, and they are audited and then supported by administration, so fully support these. So thank you for that. I will call the question all in favor. The motion is carried unanimously. Counselor Kabasia for proposed motion number two, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll move that council approve up to thirty-six thousand three hundred and thirty dollars for the town of Stony Plains' two thousand twenty-five capital cost share request as presented.
Thank you.
Just, just as a comment, there are, this is for existing facilities. We had the pleasure of attending, Counselor Kucha Johnson, the mayor, and myself, attending the sod turning for Stony Plain, their new facility that's planned in this area of the Westview School. So I think that there will be some other considerations down the road, certainly, but there, there's expansions, and there's not only opportunity for that municipality, but for our residents as well.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, comments, debate? I will call the question all in favor. The motion is carried unanimously. Let's move on to the proposed motion number three. I'll look to Deputy Mayor Kucha Johnson, please.
That council approve up to sixteen thousand six hundred and seventy-three for the town of Devon's County two thousand twenty-five capital cost share request as represented. I would like to make a comment that I really am, I think that this is a good idea, that we're supporting our partners, and what they've done for our community is really quite great. Would your answer be similar to the answer that you gave in regards to how do we know what our percentage is for all of these, like Stony Plain, Devon, and Yellowhead County? They're analyzed yearly, then?
Through the mayor to Counselor Kucha Johnson. So every municipality reports on their attendance for the path, the previous audited year, and then every kind of year, we may audit or spot check different municipalities. So we don't, we don't verify each municipality annually. We just kind of do a check and balance throughout, especially if there's a major change. We've seen some go down and some go up.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I will call the question all in favor. The motion is carried unanimously. Let's move on to proposed motion number four. Go to Counselor Kowalski.
Thank you. That council approve up to forty-five thousand dollars for Yellowhead County's two thousand twenty-four capital cost share request. And if maybe, Ms. Merrill, you might, for our residents, say what facilities this is going to. I think they'd appreciate knowing that. Thank you.
Through the mayor to Counselor Kowalski. So for Yellowhead County, it is the Evansburg Arena, which is managed by PARs. And Yellowhead County, I will just make a little note, our agreement with them is a fifty-fifty split. Theirs isn't based on usage numbers, which is exactly what they do for us for the whistle pool, so we both do fifty-fifty on the two facilities.
Thank you. Counselor Kabasia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just, you just mentioned PARs and representing former councillor Hoofslut on that committee, an organizational review was undertaken, and they're looking at use of the facilities in the area. I think the Legion was being abandoned, and they were looking, they had a plan to take that override, forwarded that to staff. And also, that arena is over fifty years old, so that's part of the reconsiderations on how they're looking at that facility, how they're managing, how they're using it. So I think that there will be some discussion. We will have to review what their ask is, what engagement of Parkland County. And, you know, currently, this forty-five thousand dollars for two thousand twenty-five is on the books for us, but I can see some shifts happening there with those two facilities in the future, so we'll have to give those consideration, and probably council can review that organizational review at some point as well, in brief. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any further comments, questions, debate? I will call the question all in favor. Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Merrill. Let's move on. Item seven point one, the Rural Municipalities of Alberta Newsletter Update. Counselor Weedman for the motion, please.
Do the Rural Municipalities of Alberta Newsletter be received for information as presented?
Great, thank you. Questions, comments, debate? We'll call the question all in favor. Motion carried unanimously. Counselor Kabasia, item seven point two, Federation of Canadian Municipalities Update.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Federation of Canadian Municipalities update be received for information as presented.
Thank you. Motion before us, questions, comments, debate? We'll call the question all in favor. Motion carried unanimously. Let's move on to the mayor's report. Coming up on the screen, so busy couple of weeks. September twenty-seventh, I attended the grand opening of the University of Concordia. September twenty-eighth, one of the most favorite events of the year is the Atchison Business Awards Gala at the Doubletree in Edmonton. Very well attended, sold out, and a tremendous evening to share with our business partners in the Atchison business area. September thirtieth, attended two events, the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation at the Heritage Park in Stony Plain, and then in the evening, attended the Horizon Stage event in Spruce Grove. October second, attended the CFR Canadian Finals Rodeo Reception in Edmonton. October second, as well, attended the Westview Health Foundation forty-year anniversary in Stony Plain. October third, attended the EMRB Audit and Finance Committee meeting through Zoom. Also, October third, attended the CFR event at Rogers Place through Explorer Edmonton for the rodeo. October fourth, attended the Edmonton Global Virtual Town Hall. October fourth, as well, attended Kiwi Nursery's Halloween event in Parkland County. October fifth, attended the Golf Biz Grand Opening in Stony Plain. October seventh, met with Nomadic Networks Connectivity Opportunities in Parkland County. And as well, October seventh, attended the Pembina Zone District Three meeting in the Royal Hotel in Edmonton, as well as in the evening, attended the Zone MLA meeting in Royal Hotel in Edmonton. And always important to note that our two MLAs were present, MLA Getson and MLA Bojchenko, and also had an opportunity to spend some time with Minister Mackayver. So time well spent. That is my report. Any questions or comments? Counselor Kucha Johnson for the motion, please.
That the mayor's report be received for his information as presented.
Thank you. Any debate, question, comments? We'll call the question all in favor. Motion carried unanimously. Let's go to committee reports, item seven point four. I'll start with Counselor Kowalski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My report is fairly brief, but on Octu, September twentieth, I will go back that far. I attended ASB by Zoom, and we worked on resolutions and planning for the regional meeting that Parkland County is hosting. Went to the Pembina Zone meeting as well yesterday for the morning. Then attended earlier in the day, the Nomadic Networks with the mayor and Mr. Dyke and our chief network specialist. I attended Kiwi Nurseries with my grandson on the Saturday, so that was, I didn't, I didn't go the whole walk, because it was a bit challenging, but what a phenomenal, phenomenal event that they put on. It's really quite amazing. And that's all that I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Deputy Mayor Kucha Johnson.
Okay, um, division, okay, September twenty-fifth to twenty-six, I went to the Alberta Municipal Convention in Red Deer. The late councillor Alan Hoofslut contributions were recognized there. We reviewed and debated over twenty-seven proposed resolutions. Only two were defeated. Spruce Grove put a successful resolution for a call for increased capital funding for accessible playgrounds for all playgrounds in Alberta, public schools. September twenty-eighth, I went to the Atchison Business Association Gala. September thirtieth was National Day for Truth and Reconciliation at Heritage Park. We saw many councillors and partners from Spruce Grove and Stony Plain there. October second, Westview Health Foundation forty-year anniversary. It's a foundation that bridges the gap between the funding allotted for Alberta health services and the demands of the Westview zone area. October third and fourth, I went to the Stronger Together Library Conference. I guess the one thing that kind of stood out in my head was, we talked about how our rural libraries are a lot different than our urban libraries in terms of their needs. October fourth was Stony Plain Recreation Centre groundbreaking event, and October seventh was the Pembina District meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kabasia.
I just had a comment or a question for Counselor Kucha Johnson. I know you attended, along with Counselor Weedman, the Munis Conference, and you mentioned the resolutions, and I understand that there was a resolution, it was somewhere in Red Deer area, Cochrane, somewhere, there was a resolution that was put forward with regard to issues around code of conduct. And I'm not sure of the debate on that motion. I, I do know that government did also follow up. There was some comment, because those recommendations are recommendations for government action. And in terms of code of conduct, Municipal Affairs Department is responsible for sustainable effective government, and they do require municipalities to hold code of conduct. So because of the concerns that are coming from multiple municipalities, I understand that there's been a move to look at establishing an integrity committee so that there can be third-party evaluation of issues that are coming from council concerns. Did you have any comment about the discussion on that motion at Alberta Munis?
Yes, the resolution was called Independent Office of Integrity for Local Government, and it was seventy-seven percent in favor. A comment was made that perhaps government interference would not be a good choice, but that was, people did not, were not concerned about that issue, and there was really not too much debate over that. Like I said, it was well received with the seventy-seven percent in favor.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Counselor Kucha Johnson? Go to Counselor Kabasia, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did submit my report as well. I just wanted to highlight, I forwarded to our acting CEO Dyke, the event, the format for the October third Sturgeon Mayor's Open House and Address, and I think there's opportunity for Parkland County. We've talked about open house, you know, how we might engage the community and the format that was carried out with that Sturgeon event to us, that was something I think we could look into, and just the fact that they had, Senator Chad was there, the fire chief was there, and talking about programming, and that opportunity really worked well. So that may be something we want to just consider when we offer our open house. I know we've done it tri-regionally, but there's an opportunity there. And I, I as well attended the Kiwi Nursery Halloween event. So good, I went twice, took my granddaughter later in the afternoon, and I think as well, there's some opportunity for tourism partnership with us with that facility. The draw that they're getting, the community that's being engaging there, is, is really growing, and it's being done well, and I think Parkland County should be, be engaged in, in terms of planning and tourism opportunities there. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Counselor Weedman.
Never sure how far to go back on this, but I'll go back to the twenty-third here. So I've had a couple of meetings regarding the Seba Beach School with the developer there. Talked to, or stopped and had a discussion with Grepit at the distillery and tried his new whiskey that he's brewing right now. It was very good. We didn't have much, though, so don't, don't think that I was there for a long time. You just, you just get a little taste, like a tiny little taste.
I heard you were there for six hours.
Yeah, no, no, you would have been carrying me home. So I had a couple of discussions with a lady that wants to start a business in Wabman, and she's looking at the house that we have there for sale, and I understand that they probably put an offer in on the weekend, so hopefully that goes through somewhere. Red Deer Munis, as Sally said, we were there. The, the discussion on the integrity commissioner didn't have a lot of substance. They, they, there was a lot of, I guess, discussion about it should get pushed back on the province, but then, and the, the costs of, of all of these things to the individual municipalities. So that's where it went. There was an article in the St. Albert Gazette, and I think I have it somewhere. If somebody wants it, they wrote on that particular discussion. Had some discussion on Whitewood Sands, then Red Deer, let's see, too many funerals lately. I guess maybe because I'm getting older, but I don't know. Atchison Business Awards, we, we had a good time at that. There was a good story there about Gen X, so that was really interesting. And yeah, SDAB yesterday, I couldn't make it to Pembina Zone, so that's about it.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Counselor Weedman? Okay, we'll look to Counselor Kowalski for the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that the committee reports be accepted as presented.
Thank you. Motion is on the floor. Questions, comments, debate? We'll call the question all in favor. Motion is carried unanimously. Let's move on to item eight point one, which is our closed session. I'll look to Counselor Weedman for the motion, please.
Council convening in closed session pursuant to section one ninety-seven of the MGA to meet in private to discuss matters protected from disclosure by sections twenty-one and twenty-four of the Freedom of Information and Protection and Privacy Act.
Thank you. Motion is on the floor. Questions, comments, debates? We'll call the question all in favor. Motion is carried unanimously. We'll take a couple of minutes to move into closed session. Thank you. And then we'll come back to that.
It's in.
Great, welcome back all. We're going to reconvene our open session meeting at 10:11 a.m. I'd like to remind all that the only motion made while in camera was the motion to revert back to regular session made by Deputy Mayor Kuchar Johnson at 10:10 a.m. We will be moving forward to item 6b1 but we're going to take a short break and we will reconvene at 10:20. Thank you.
Robert.
Welcome back all. We're going to reconvene our council meeting at 10:28 a.m. We're moving to item 6B1, Wireless Internet Rebate Program Broadband Operating Project. I'll turn that over to Mr. Dyke for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will turn this over to Mr. Gibbons to walk us through the presentation and answer any questions council may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dyke, Mr. Mayor and councilors. So this item is about continuing the on from the Satellite Internet Rebate Trial. And this is the Wireless Internet Rebate Program. Next slide, please. So again, this is based off of, oh, sorry, I skipped ahead myself. So we're going to take you over through a quick overview. We're going to look at some goals and then the recommendation that feeds the motions before us. Next slide. Thank you. So as a quick reminder, we had the rebate trial Q1 of this year. We had poor participation that everyone knows about, but we did get good feedback from the participants about the application process and the services that were available. We know that demand for wireless internet service continues and a new program would extend the offer based on demonstrated need. Next slide, please. So we are looking to remove the barrier to entry for qualified residents. We want to extend the original trial offering based on county residents providing proof of speed tests that are under the national threshold or a declared inability to establish a wired connection. Obviously, you can't test your speed if you can't establish a connection. So we're going to redouble some efforts around communicating the program. We're going to use additional channels to improve the uptake and different methods. And we also want to use this opportunity to collect more of our own data around speed tests. And that will feed our strategic planning. Next slide, please. So we're recommending that council ask us to reinstate the rebate for the wireless internet service. We will apprise you of any demand surges so that we can adjust budget and schedule. And the final item there is about the budget. So we're proposing to move $103,000 from restricted surplus, which is the universal broadband budget into our operating project. That's the end of the presentation. So the motions, then? So we have two that administration be directed to reinstate the program to supply a rebate for equipment and installation fees to enable access to high-speed wireless internet service for qualified rate payers. And then the second motion is that council approve funding for that $103,000 from the Rural Communications Network lifecycle restricted surplus. Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. We'll go to the first proposed motion. I believe we were with at Council Kowalski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Rick, for that information. That administration be directed to reinstate the program to supply rebate for equipment and installation fees to enable access to high-speed wireless internet service for qualified rate payers. And just I will just say we appreciate the work and forethought to continue this on. And I have two questions, if I may. So what's the installation nowadays? About $1,000 or is it less, I think?
Thank you, Council Kowalski. The understanding is that the installation tends to be a few hundred dollars with equipment. It's usually around anywhere from four to, I've heard, maximum of about $800 all in.
So approximately $1,000, $1,100 per home. And so any resident in Parkland County can apply.
Thank you, Council Kowalski. We would like to, yeah, open it up for access to anyone.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to Council Weedman, then Deputy Mayor Kuchar Johnson.
Just to explain qualified rate payers, what's your opinion or your qualified?
Thank you, Council Weedman. So just back to that one slide that I had around either demonstrated consistent speeds below the national threshold or declaration that you can't establish a wireless in your area.
Was there not some restrictions from Starlink as to who could qualify or who could get services while at one time?
Thank you, Council Weedman. I believe there were, but we're also proposing that we don't restrict this to just Starlink. So if there is an alternative wireless service that's available in a particular area, we heard on Monday from Nomadic about new technology that will go through trees a little bit better. It's called TV white space. So we would like to open it up for any viable service that's going to supply the appropriate speeds.
Thank you. Go to Deputy Mayor Kuchar Johnson.
Well, this seems exciting for my residents, then, that they have the potential to be a qualified rate payer. So I would hope that we would be able to promote it and advertise it out to our residents. And they'll be happy with this news if it's so, if it's successful, the proposed motion.
Thank you. Go to Council Kabassi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate your comment on the TD white space because there's the sightline and problems that affect speed of accessibility are really important. I know up in Division III area, that's a concern that I heard raised there. So appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I'll just provide some comments and perhaps question. I support the motion. I know that we did a trial in an area, in a small area, to try and see what uptake there would be. However, I believe opening this up to qualified residents, which would, I believe, any household that demonstrates the low connectivity speed would be able to take advantage of this. So this does provide maybe not the most optimal solution, but it provides a solution and demonstrates that we're equitably applying this solution across the county. So regardless of whether you're in a high populous area, in a hamlet, in an ag area, or in far west of our county, we're opening up this so that all residents who have low speed have the opportunity to take advantage of Starlink. I'm a user of Starlink. I think it's awesome. So we are moving forward in one regard with respect to connectivity for all residents of Parkland County. So I certainly do appreciate that. My question would be related to, are we putting limits on the dollar amounts or are we simply saying hardware and installation in general? Or is there a cap on that? I can't remember from the previous one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we would cap it at $1,000, and that would be installation and equipment costs.
Awesome. And follow up to that, do we have a preferred installer that we use? Or is this incumbent on the resident to simply find their avenue?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It would be incumbent on residents to determine who they wanted their, to provide their services in their area.
Perfect. This is exciting. I think this is a good way forward while in conjunction we still provide opportunity for discussions with organizations and looking at potential fiber opportunities within Parkland County and partnerships therein as well. And I agree with Council Kuchar Johnson that I think a robust communication demonstrating our commitment to our residents should be presented as well. Those are my comments. Thank you. Any others? Council Kabassi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your comments, I think there's an expectation from the community, this unsolved problem that continues to be an albatross around our neck. They expect leadership from municipality. You know, there's a broader, you know, provincial and federal partners here, but they look and expect leadership from municipalities. That's where it's landed. That's closest to home. And that's where they see their point of accessing of serviceability. So positive staff for Parkland.
Any others? Questions, comments, debate? First motion is before us. I will call the question. All in favor? The motion is carried unanimously. Let's move to the proposed motion number two. Council Weedman.
That council approved funding for up to 103,000 from Rural Communications Network Lifestyle Restricted Surplus.
Great. Thank you. Motion is on the floor. Comments, questions?
Is there any way we can leverage this for some kind of a grant from the province based on the fact that, or from the federal government that we can't use the other one? Is there, is there a way to go to them and say, you know, look, that other one is not worded for us?
Mr. Mayor, to you and through you, and Mr. Gibbons may want to supplement as well on this one, but at this point, the current grant opportunities do not include this type of wireless rebate program.
Thank you. Council Kowalski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is about 100 homes. So if it's filled up in two weeks, you're going to be back.
All right. Thank you, Council Kowalski. That's correct.
Great. Thank you. Any other further questions, comments, debate? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. And thank you for the presentation and all the work that you're doing on this landscape that is continuously changing before us. But as long as we're apprised and in front of it and doing the best we can and looking at opportunities for future grants, future fiber, recognizing that satellite is an opportunity we can provide to all, that is wonderful. So thank you for that. That brings us to the last item on our agenda today. I will now declare our meeting officially closed at 10:40 a.m. Thank you. We'll take